Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Good morning. Shh. Good morning. I want to welcome you to City Hall, your Los Angeles City Council, Tuesday, the 7th of August. We do have a quorum. Joanne, welcome. Good to see you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Haristoson, Weezer, Karetz, Krakorin, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves. Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves. Englander seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
If all would please rise, I'll lead us. If everybody would please place their right hand over their heart, repeat after me.
Aye. To the flag, our United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Amen. Okay, let's continue. Madam Clerk, go through the agenda.
Mr. President, items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all 5 items.
All right, continue.
Item 6 is an item for which a public hearing has been held. The committee report has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
All right, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Englander. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Items 7 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on items 7, 8, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Okay, let us prepare then to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Okay, next item, please.
13 ayes.
Okay, that item's approved. Next item, please.
Mr. Chair President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, we'll take multiple cards. Mr. Walsh. Is Mr. Walsh here? I don't see him, so we'll go ahead and file his card. Let's go into general public comment. Joanne Garb. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Great to see you.
Good to see all of you again. I guess we're all back from recess. I'm Joanne Yovanick Garb from West Hills Neighborhood Council, and I'm a budget advocate for the Southwest Valley area. I just want you to know that the budget advocates are alive and well. We have a whole new crew who's very anxious to get started, and it looks like it's going to be a good year, banner year for us, and we're going to be digging deep and seeing what we can do to help you guys. My other issue is the, I saw the other day that they're going to be taking down like 30 trees on Cherokee Avenue. Now, I understand that there are some trees that have to be removed because of their root structure and it can't be done, but we have to have a humane trimming of trees rather than taking them down. There are many other cities across the nation. Seattle is one where they do have humane trimming, tree trimmings, and I think it's something we ought to be looking into instead of cutting them down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Daniel Gus, followed by Patricia McAllister. Mr. Walsh, when I called your name, you were not here, and we waited and paused. I called it twice, so Daniel Gus, come on up. You're taking up, I called Daniel Gus. Go ahead and have a seat, Mr. Walsh.
Good morning, council members. Daniel Gus, I have the number one most-read article on City Watch this morning. Last Friday, the LA Times finally wrote an article about a story that I published a week earlier about Mr. Wesson, who suddenly disappeared, welching on his credit cards as well as his mortgages. Now, you know that the LA Times is protecting Herb Wesson because neither David Zahnizer nor Emily Albert Reyes tweeted it to their 13,000 followers on Twitter, because the LA Times is protecting Mr. Wesson. And even though Mr. Wesson disappeared to the back room, he knows the story that I'm angling for. Council members, you need to replace Mr. Wesson. There is a lot more to this story than he's telling you. He's spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on his son's wedding and defaulting on his credit cards. He is not telling you the truth. The Times won't tell the story, but I will. And Mr. Karetz, you just lost your best animal services commissioner. I sent you an email this morning. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. McAllister?
It's a known fact that African-American politicians are not allowed to steal, so I'm not surprised that any of the African-Americans are having financial problems. It's the white folks that can steal, but they don't allow the blacks to get anything, okay? Anything extra. So don't come in here talking about what Herb Wesson is doing with his money. Mind your own business. Now, as far as the city attorney, this is a city attorney, and he left. He's his name, the one who sits there all the time telling you, oh, there he is, what you can't say. His name is Fable. He makes $185,000 a year. I got his salary. They're starting him off at $100,000. Now, we've got ghost employees, and I want the controller, because the controller is the one who put them on the payroll, and he's a ghost. They don't exist. We want to investigate him, the mayor who's signing off on all of this theft, and we want definitely Mayor Garcetti and the controller. We need an investigation because I believe, they have $124 million budget, and I believe most of it is for theft.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have, do I have other items?
That was all your time. Multiple cards, yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh, I'm going to go ahead and give you your one minute for general public comment. So you have one minute.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I just want you to know that your attempt over here by the mayor to get Mark Ridley Thomas to resign, I've never seen such a story in the LA Times. There's not one shred of evidence, there's not one accusation, and he's under investigation by the federal government. What they're trying to do is get Mark Ridley Thomas to resign, and then what will happen is that, once he resigns, then we have someone take over his seat, and Herb Wesson will run for supervisor. This is all set up, and then the mayor will support Herb Wesson Jr.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McAllister, I realize you do have more time if you want to come on up on your other items.
Okay, what item number do you have?
8, 8, and 13.
Right, right. 13, here they want $75,000 to transfer for recycling and transfer station, and this is Weezer. Weezer, he's Hispanic, and every time I look around, he's supposed to be building a skid row, he's not building a darn thing, and every time I look around, he wanted to give a clerk typist $100,000. He was probably going to get $80,000 of it himself. Now, don't give him a dime. We don't know what he's doing with this money, but I know you allow these Hispanics to steal. And I don't know who they giving kickbacks to. He wants $75,000. He's got, he wants $38 million to fix up a building, not build a building, fix it up. I don't know why you allow him to get away with all of this, but I believe he's kicking back. That's what I believe. Now, number 8, this is about, let's see, yes, here, I don't like the fact here that you want all of this street lighting, and then you're going to take money from the taxpayers. See, that's why I complain about this embezzlement, the city attorney's office, because they have to get that $124 million from somewhere. It's like a budget. It is a budget. So they're going to get it from things like this, charging taxpayers $11,000 a year, talking about they're going to put it in some fund for the lights and all that kind of crap. Even on the web, they talking about they may start charging us to look at the agenda on the mail, on the web. All of these little things they do to get that $124 million. Now, why they keep doing this? Because they're used to that kind of money, okay? We got to break this city attorney's office down. They don't deserve no $124 million budget, and I think I got some proof that these are ghosts, and we're going to get that controller. We're going to get him and make him accountable for putting these non-existent people on the payroll, because once you put them on the payroll, that money gets shifted to your friends, and to your, you know, that's how it works. It's called get ghost payroll. And for this man right here to be making $185,000 to sit up here and tell us what we can and cannot say, I can do that. We need to reduce these salaries down to at least $80,000 a year.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes all of the public comment and general public comments. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment for the council meeting, and we can go ahead and vote on items 1 through 5. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on items 1 through 5. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. And then we can go ahead and vote on 7 and 8. We'll go ahead and open the roll on 7 and 8. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. And now we can go ahead and vote on items 12 through 20. Go ahead and open the roll on 12 through 20. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Okay, now we have a presentation. Councilmember Joe Buscaino and Mike Bonin, yes. Okay, and then we have a request to send item 12 forthwith, so without objection, that'll be the order, 12 forthwith, thank you.
And for the record, the vote on the items 12 through 20 are?
All behind me.
14 ayes.
Good morning, Mike. Nobody ever calls me sir. It's usually, hey, you jerk. 12 guy in the front. There you go.
Good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Buscaino and I today have an absolutely phenomenal organization to honor a group of awesome people doing awesome work, both in my district and in his district, and who are simultaneously solving multiple problems. As many of you know, over the past several years, Venice, like many parts of Los Angeles, has been undergoing dramatic change with new folks moving in, and there always tends to be, or can be, tension between newer residents and older residents. And someone, Nicole Landers, who's standing behind me, and some of her friends, had a brilliant idea that there was a way to bridge the gap between older folks and newer folks in the neighborhood and get them to work together. And she looked around, and they looked around, and they saw that there were all these parkways that could look better, and they decided to set up what they call community healing gardens. They set up planter boxes around Venice. They now have over 60 of them all around Venice, and 10 of them at Oakwood Park, where people in Venice grow food together in these planter boxes. They solve, as I said, multiple problems, because one of the things they do is they achieve reducing vacant space in Venice and beautifying it. They also have a deep concern for the environment. They work with an organization also started in Venice called Skywater, so that the water they use doesn't come from our tap, it comes from the air. Skywater actually takes water, moisture, out of the air, turns it into water, and that's how they water their plants. They actually engage with young homeless people from Safe Place for Youth in Venice who volunteer with them, and then some of the food they produce is actually put on the table for other homeless people in Venice at Bread and Roses, which is the local restaurant slash soup kitchen, it's more of a restaurant than a soup kitchen, operated by the St. Joseph Center in Venice. They have been doing this for three years now in Venice. I got to spend some time with them on Earth Day, and I learned, not only were they doing all of this amazing work in Venice, but they've expanded, and they've moved into CD15, and Mr. Buscaino will tell you about that.
Thank you, Mike. This gives me a great pleasure to honor Community Healing Gardens and what they stand for, and what they continue to do for both our respective districts. For us in the Watts community, they took and transformed over an acre lot that was empty at adjacent Markham Middle School, and it's part of the Los Angeles Tech Incubator Lacy partnership along with Markham Middle School. As Mike indicated, the garden is equipped with a device that converts moisture in the air to provide water for the garden. And now this device, and that is really was born out of Lacy, is part of the curriculum, the STEM curriculum at Markham Middle School, and it's already instilled the curiosity for the clean tech arena and inspired many of our students at Markham Middle School to think big and be creative. And the students at Markham are learning about fruits, herbs, and vegetables, healthy living and eating, energy and water conservation, environmental awareness, and how cutting-edge technology can be created and applied to solve our day-to-day needs and problems. But a huge victory for the Watts community most recently was the award of the $35 million transformative climate communities grant, and the Community Healing Gardens is part of that collaborative, and it was at the Community Healing Garden at Markham Middle School where the mayor and I stood, along with the collaborative and the community-based organizations and residents, where we announced the $35 million TCC grant from the state. So the award is well-deserved here, and we look forward to continuing to seeing this garden and our community grow. And personally, I've seen community gardens since I was a kid, where my grandfather, Nono Gaetano, took me at North Gaffey, and it was there where he taught us the importance of really being respectful of the environment and showing clearly your fruits of labor, where the tomatoes he grew, the squash that he grew, the zucchini he grew, we were able to bring home and enjoy as a family, and even fast-forward today, my father and a couple of my uncles continue to embrace community gardens in the San Pedro area, where they just made Nona Rosa, my mom just finished her first tomato sauce of canning, of her first tomato sauce, and those tomatoes came out of the community garden in San Pedro. So again, thank you so much for your amazing contribution, not only to our environment, to our community, between CD11 and 15. We love you. Congratulations.
So like I said, these folks are all about solutions and all about partnerships, and it's one of the reasons that I'm inviting them, and I'm hopeful that they will participate with us in the Bridge Housing in Venice, so that the people who live in the community and the people who live in the Bridge Housing will have an opportunity to work together and garden together and produce food that can be used there as well. So let me, first of all, present a certificate, along with Mr. Buscaino, to Nicole and her team.
Wow.
And then I'll introduce Nicole and ask her to introduce her team and say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Councilmember Bonin and Buscaino, and thank you to all of you for having us here this morning. My name is Nicole Landers, and I'm the co-founder of Community Healing Gardens, and I'd also like to bring up Ben Hirschfeld, who is my partner in crime in this mission, Farmer Ben. Without him, none of this would be possible. We met at UCLA at a sustainability program, which changed my life, and you can see right here why. We are so blessed to be working in Venice. We have affected over 300 youth, we've had over 500 volunteers, and we've grown over 5,000 pounds of food between Watts and Venice. And with the help of community and the help of individuals and businesses and other nonprofits working together, not in silos, we can create real change in Los Angeles. This is the future. Urban farming is here and now. We need to look at it to help people to rise. It gives jobs, it gives healthy living, and creates sustainability in our communities. So if you are interested to have a Community Healing Garden in your community, please let us know. I'd like to introduce the rest of our team, starting on my left, Karen Lewis, one of my board members. Thank you, Karen. Stu Luke, another board member. Alyssa Fisher-Harris, a board member, and also Alyssa, I just want to say, grew up homeless for the 12 years of her beginning of her life. So she is somebody that understands what's going on in our community of Los Angeles. Also, I'd like to share Estelle Reyes with us today from the Los Angeles Clean Tech Incubator. The Los Angeles Clean Tech Incubator is a full partner with Community Healing Gardens because they saw a way to bring their clean technology to create change and grow food and create environmental solutions for the future, which gives children So they're going to get it from things like this, charging taxpayers $11,000 a year, talking about they're going to put it in some fund for the lights and all that kind of crap. Even on the web, they're talking about they may start charging us to look at the agenda on the mail, on the web. All of these little things they do to get that $124 million. Now, why they keep doing this? Because they're used to that kind of money, okay? We got to break this city attorney's office down. They don't deserve no $124 million budget, and I think I got some proof that these are ghosts. And we're going to get that controller. We're going to get him and make him accountable for putting these nonexistent people on the payroll. Because once you put them on the payroll, that money gets shifted to your friends and into your, you know, that's how it works. It's called get ghost payroll. And for this man right here to be making $185,000 to sit up here and tell us what we can and cannot say, I can do that. We need to reduce these salaries down to at least $80,000 a year.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes all of the public comment and general public comments. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment for the council meeting. And we can go ahead and vote on items 1 through 5. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on items 1 through 5. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. And then we can go ahead and vote on 7 and 8. We'll go ahead and open the roll on 7 and 8. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. And now we can go ahead and vote on items 12 through 20. Go ahead and open the roll on 12 through 20. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Okay, now we have a presentation, Councilmember Joe Buscaino. And Mike Bonin, yes. Okay, then we have a request to send item 12 forthwith. So without objection, that'll be the order, 12 forthwith, thank you.
And for the record, the vote on the items 12 through 20 are?
All behind me.
14 ayes.
Sir, wow. Nobody ever calls me sir. It's usually, hey, you jerk.
Good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Buscaino and I today have an absolutely phenomenal organization to honor a group of awesome people doing awesome work, both in my district and in his district, and who are simultaneously solving multiple problems. As many of you know, over the past several years, Venice, like many parts of Los Angeles, has been undergoing dramatic change with new folks moving in, and there always tends to be, or can be, tension between newer residents and older residents. And someone, Nicole Landers, who's standing behind me, and some of her friends, had a brilliant idea that there was a way to bridge the gap between older folks and newer folks in the neighborhood and get them to work together. And she looked around, and they looked around, and they saw that there were all these parkways that could look better, and they decided to set up what they call Community Healing Gardens. They set up planter boxes around Venice. They now have over 60 of them all around Venice, and 10 of them at Oakwood Park, where people in Venice grow food together in these planter boxes. They solve, as I said, multiple problems, because one of the things they do is they achieve reducing vacant space in Venice and beautifying it. They also have a deep concern for the environment. They work with an organization also started in Venice called Skywater, so that the water they use doesn't come from our tap, it comes from the air. Skywater actually takes water, moisture, out of the air, turns it into water, and that's how they water their plants. They actually engage with young homeless people from Safe Place for Youth in Venice who volunteer with them. And then some of the food they produce is actually put on the table for other homeless people in Venice at Bread and Roses, which is the local restaurant slash soup kitchen, it's more of a restaurant than a soup kitchen, operated by the St. Joseph's Center in Venice. They have been doing this for three years now in Venice. I got to spend some time with them on Earth Day. And I learned, not only were they doing all of this amazing work in Venice, but they've expanded, and they've moved into CD 15, and Mr. Buscaino will tell you about that.
Thank you, Mike. This gives me a great pleasure to honor Community Healing Gardens and what they stand for, and what they continue to do for both our respective districts. For us in the Watts community, they took and transformed over an acre lot that was empty at adjacent Markham Middle School. And it's part of the Los Angeles Tech Incubator-Lacy partnership along with Markham Middle School. As Mike indicated, the garden is equipped with a device that converts moisture in the air to provide water for the garden. And now this device, and that is really was born out of Lacy, is part of the curriculum, the STEM curriculum at Markham Middle School. And it's already instilled a curiosity for the clean tech arena and inspired many of our students at Markham Middle School to think big and be creative. And the students at Markham are learning about fruits, herbs, and vegetables, healthy living and eating, energy and water conservation, environmental awareness, and how cutting-edge technology can be created and applied to solve our day-to-day needs and problems. But a huge victory for the Watts community most recently was the award of the $35 million transformative climate communities grant. And the Community Healing Gardens is part of that collaborative, and it was at the Community Healing Garden at Markham Middle School where the mayor and I stood along with the collaborative and the community-based organizations and residents where we announced the $35 million TCC grant from the state. So the award is well-deserved here, and we look forward to continuing to seeing this garden and our community grow. And personally, I've seen community gardens since I was a kid, where my grandfather, Nonu Gaetano, took me at North Gaffey, and it was there where he taught us the importance of really being respectful of the environment and showing clearly your fruits of labor, where the tomatoes he grew, the squash that he grew, the zucchini he grew, we were able to bring home and enjoy as a family. And even fast forward today, my father and a couple of my uncles continue to embrace community gardens in the San Pedro area, where they just made, Nonu Rosa, my mom, just finished her first tomato sauce of canning, of her first tomato sauce, and those tomatoes came out of the community garden in San Pedro. So again, thank you so much for your amazing contribution, not only to our environment, to our community between CD 11 and 15. We love you, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
So like I said, these folks are all about solutions and all about partnerships, and it's one of the reasons that I'm inviting them, and I'm hopeful that they will participate with us in the Bridge Housing in Venice, so that the people who live in the community and the people who live in the Bridge Housing will have an opportunity to work together and garden together and produce food that can be used there as well. So let me, first of all, present a certificate along with Mr. Buscaino to Nicole and her team.
Wow.
Here comes Sharon. Everybody squeeze in? And then I'll introduce Nicole and ask her to introduce her team and say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Councilmember Bonin and Buscaino. And thank you to all of you for having us here this morning. My name is Nicole Landers, and I'm the co-founder of Community Healing Gardens. And I'd also like to bring up Ben Hirschfeld, who is my partner in crime in this mission, Farmer Ben. Without him, none of this would be possible. We met at UCLA at a sustainability program, which changed my life. And you can see right here why. We are so blessed to be working in Venice. We have affected over 300 youth, we've had over 500 volunteers, and we've grown over 5,000 pounds of food between Watts and Venice. And with the help of community, and the help of individuals, and businesses, and other nonprofits working together, not in silos, we can create real change in Los Angeles. This is the future. Urban farming is here and now. We need to look at it to help people to rise. It gives jobs, it gives healthy living, and creates sustainability in our communities. So if you are interested to have a Community Healing Garden in your community, please let us know. I'd like to introduce the rest of our team, starting on my left, Karen Lewis, one of my board members. Thank you, Karen. Stu Luke, another board member. Alyssa Fisher-Harris, a board member. And also, Alyssa, I just want to say, grew up homeless for the 12 years of her, beginning of her life. So she is somebody that understands what's going on in our community of Los Angeles. Also, I'd like to share Estelle Reyes with us today from the Los Angeles Clean Tech Incubator. The Los Angeles Clean Tech Incubator is a full partner with Community Healing Gardens because they saw a way to bring their clean technology to create change and grow food, and create environmental solutions for the future, which gives children that we work with at Markham Middle School in Watts a track to learn about clean technology, and to create jobs, and have them stay in school to learn and to grow. So thank you, Estelle, and LACI. And then we have Tiffany Page, who is also a native of Los Angeles, who is on our board. And we are growing. So thank you so much for this incredible honor. I am grateful, and so is my team.
All right, congratulations again, thank you for that. That concludes the council agenda. Colleagues, do we have any announcements?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Council does have motions for posting a referral.
Okay, those are posted and referred, thank you very much. Seeing no announcements, we have an announcement? Seeing no announcements, do we have an adjourning motion? Yes, we do. If we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions, including our special guests for visiting us here today. Councilmember, if we can ask the floor to remain quiet for a moment, too, please? Thank you, Mr. Rue, you can lead us into the adjourning motion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of a community leader and a man of faith, Reverend Monsignor Robert Gallagher. Reverend Gallagher served parishioners of the St. Charles Burmile Catholic Church in North Hollywood for 14 years. Born in Arlita, Reverend Gallagher was called by his faith at an early age, and knew what he wanted, and knew that he wanted to be a priest by the time he graduated high school in Van Nuys. He served as a priest for the Archdiocese of Los Angeles for 45 years, from Hawthorne to La Puente, Santa Fe Springs to North Hills. And as a pastor, a teacher, and a high school principal, Reverend Gallagher helped countless Angelinos live fuller lives and walk closer to God. He was the people's priest who was adorned by his parishioners and was cherished by those he served. This was made clear to me at his funeral last Thursday, where over 1,000 people and Cardinal Mahoney came to pay their last respects to a man who has given so much to the souls of Los Angeles. He is survived by his church, his friends, Reverend Gomez, Reverend Clark, and a countless number of God's children to whom he pledged his earthly life. He is home now, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Rue, do we have any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, we do have, colleagues, a motion that was just introduced, so I'm going to wait for the clerk for a moment to go ahead and circulate. I already signed it, yes. So that concludes the council meeting, but we're not adjourned yet. So we'll go ahead and give a moment for the clerk to submit that final motion. Thank you. Okay, colleagues, that concludes this meeting. We are adjourned, thank you.